Good morning, good afternoon. I'll call this meeting to order for the public hearing. Before us we have the agenda, and part two is to solicit public comment to receive input on the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funding of $5,430,362, which is over 1% of the total current budget. So the floor is now open to receive public comment. Did we have a sign up sheet, John? I don't know if we did or not. Okay, thank you. Nice to see everyone. Thank you. Thank you very much. So for the public hearing, we have signed up Grace Stewart, Laura Mallow, Mike Bandy, Rocky Hill, and Kevin Hamilton. So the first person on this list is Grace Stewart. Would Ms. Stewart like to come forth, please? And do you mind to state your name and address for the record? Whatever you prefer.
My name is Grace Stewart. I live in Richlands. I'm, I think, the Dawson Development or something. No idea. Okay, here goes. I realize I may be tilting at windmills, but here goes. For $5.4 million, there are a lot of things you can do. Parks and recreation should just not just be parks, sports, and kids, or a brand new soccer field. Recreation includes dancing, yoga, ping pong, cards, and other things. Yet this type of recreation is not found in our park system. When we were looking for a home in the area, we were told that Tazewell County is becoming a retirement destination. But why would seniors want to relocate here if there's nothing to keep them active and engaged except maybe pickleball? Do you realize that parks and recreation primarily caters to the ages five, excuse me, five to 24? 22% of that population, but that those from ages 55 to 74 is 27%. But what is available for them? I'm not talking about seniors who require or need services from AASC. If you can spend a million dollars on a new soccer field, I think you can spend a lot less creating an active senior recreation center, which can be used year round. It may help to define the purpose of the center. It is to bright, sorry, I'm nervous. It is to provide programs and activities that will help to keep seniors energetic and stimulated. It can provide contact with others through all sorts of clubs and activities, which can be mentally, physically, and intellectually stimulating, which helps to keep seniors independent, self-sufficient, and self-reliant. Another benefit is that of socialization. Today, nearly 11,000 senior centers serve 1 million older adults aged 50-plus every day. Baby boomers want to remain both actively and in community life. Age 60 is the new 40. Promoting active living can make neighborhoods more livable for all ages and reduce costs associated with social services and health care. An active senior recreation center could bring in seniors from the surrounding areas, which could have a positive economic impact. There are many empty buildings on Front Street, which could either be bought or rented for such a center. Occupying one of these buildings could help to revitalize the heart of Richlands. For example, the pawn shop next to the section house would be an ideal location. It even has available parking. The center should be open five days a week from 8:00 to 5:00, and after 5:00 PM and on weekends, the building can be used and/or rented for other purposes, which would help to defray the cost. In conclusion, I believe there's a strong need to fill a gaping hole in Richlands. By the year 2030, the number of adults in the U.S. over the age of 65 will double and make up 20% of the population. Richlands has already exceeded 22%. This emphasis, I'm sorry, this emphasizes the need for an active senior recreation center. Our town government should not be self-serving, but community-serving. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Laura Mallow. Ms. Mallow, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Laura Mallow, 262 Linwood Drive in Richlands. First, I would like to address the fact that this public hearing wasn't advertised with the proper notice according to Virginia Code 15.2-2507. The publication was made on October 6th, making the notice given only six days prior to the hearing date. The code does require a public hearing for this matter, as it states that any such amendment which exceeds 1% of the total expenditure shown in the currently adopted budget must be accomplished by publishing a notice of a meeting and a public hearing once in a newspaper having general circulation in that locality at least seven days prior to the date of the meeting. The notice shall also state the governing body's intent to amend the budget and include a brief synopsis of the proposed budget amount. As this money does exceed 1% of the budget, a public hearing is required, as is the printing of the synopsis. We're talking about millions of dollars that's being rushed through without proper notice and opportunity for citizen input. Now regarding the money itself, I think we're on the right track. Drainage issues and the water treatment plan are priorities, and I appreciate you guys treating them as such. The one thing I do disagree with is the full million dollars going toward the rec park. We have other areas in town that desperately need attention, like the flooding issues in Lake Park, Hidden Valley, Brown Street, and Iron Street specifically. Even when the rest of the town doesn't completely flood, those homes are being destroyed by pulling water. The town did cut a ditch for a citizen in Hidden Valley to prevent the pulling of water in a driveway, so that obviously is a responsibility of the town. We have to help every citizen who's reaching out. Lake Park also needs their drains cleaned, as some are now growing trees. This creates a huge backflow of water when we have heavy rains, which is a danger to the citizens, especially the children there. There are also needs of curbs on the higher streets in the neighborhood with the big hills. The rec park needs upgrades, and I'm not saying that it doesn't, but why not compromise and give some to the rec park instead of the attire amount? If we are still dead set on the rec park, the upgrades should be those that benefit more citizens, like a computer lab, art center, music center, rock climbing wall, the center that Ms. Stewart just spoke about, not an artificial turf soccer field, which only benefits a few. This idea was proposed in 2017 by the head of the Soccer Association, where the cost was estimated at almost $700,000. Now that person sits on the council and has brought this up for discussion. I would also ask that that person abstain from further conversation or votes regarding a soccer field, as this is a conflict of interest. If we stop looking at a small sector of Richlands and start seeing every citizen as important as the next, this money gives us the opportunity to do something great in Richlands, to start something that benefits every citizen, protects homes and neighborhoods, or do something that brings revenue into the town. Please consider this carefully before making a decision, and I'm also asking you to hold another properly notified public hearing.
Thank you. Next on our sign up sheet is Mike Bandy. Mike, would you state your name and address for the benefit of the record, please?
I will. My name is Mike Bandy. My address is 141 Clinch Drive in Pounding Mill, but my business is 113 Tazewell Avenue, Richlands, where I've had business for the past 20 years now. I'm also part of, I'm the bad guy with the soccer field. So our CRSA program is very important, and I believe that upgrading our soccer field to a turf field is going to allow us to serve even more kids. Before COVID hit, we served 250 to 260 kids per year and their families. Soccer is a family sport that allows our kids, some from broken homes, some from single-parent homes, and some from normal, from regular homes, all get involved. It isn't just the kids showing up on the field. Parents coach, parents take part in practices, parents help to elevate our kids to a higher understanding of teamwork, leadership, and character. So to me, that investment in our kids is going to allow us to develop young people, some that, again, come from disadvantaged situations, to understand that, hey, somebody out there cares about me through a sport, through a team, through an activity. The ball is just a tool. Soccer reaches kids worldwide. It's universally understood, but in our area, for some kids, sometimes that's the best family contact that they have. See, that means a lot to me. And I believe that that turf field not only serves soccer, can serve softball as well, can serve football, any other new sports we bring in. Those kids that we teach character to, that we teach leadership to, that we encourage to do well in their education, they're going to be taxpayers one day. And staying in Richlands and bringing those skills, thinking back to the things that they did when they were kids, when they were on athletics, is going to help them become the citizens that we need to let our town go to the next level. So yeah, I'm in favor of a soccer field, and I'd like to see the town to consider that, please. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next on our sign up sheet is Rocky Hill. Rocky, would you state your name and address for the benefit of the record?
My name is Rocky Hill, co-owner and co-founder of God's Rock Stars. I live in Pounding Mill, Virginia. I hate to even say that because I've lived in Richlands my whole life, period. I am Richlands through and through. Now, I'm here to speak. I need some interaction here. If you could spend $1 million, and be honest, if you could spend $1 million to save your child's life or your grandkid's life, raise your hand. Be honest. If you had $1 million and you could save their lives, raise your hand. Now, I'm going to give you a history lesson and a story. All right. What people don't understand, I grew up in Red Ash. That was a poor place. Still is. I love it. I'm honored to grow up, come from there. If it hadn't have been for the Richlands Recreational Park, me as a child, I promise you, I would not be standing here in front of you guys right now. No way. What y'all don't understand is, is when we used to charge 75 cents to get into the rec park, I would go in my daddy's truck, and I would try to find three quarters. So I could go on Tuesday nights at 5:30, and Thursday nights at 5:30, and then on Saturday mornings, you could get there at 8:00, and you could beat the tennis players before they took over at 12:00. That was a big part of my life. That was the only part of my life, because not everybody, we didn't have soccer back then. We had baseball, but you didn't even have a true basketball league back then. We played at the Raven Elementary School. But the rec park was a big part of my life. It saved my life. I want to say that. It saved my life. And if it could save one life, then it's all worth it. And I'll tell you why it's worth it. I'm not bragging on myself. I'm not here to say I'm prideful. But I want to know that I honestly, in Richlands, it's helped hurly to no end. We have changed hurly through this flood. I've been a huge part of that. Couldn't have did that if we didn't have the Richlands Rec Park, because Rocky Hill Jr. wouldn't be here. I wouldn't have made it. I would have not made it. What people don't understand is not all kids get to play high school sports. My son don't play high school sports, but he loves playing at the rec park. And another thing, I get, I cringe when people say, let's do away with the rec park, let's move it, or let's do this or that. I can remember going down there on nights when we had ping pong table in the back, and the ping pong paddle didn't have foam on it. We didn't care. We could have cared less. Dave Askew would give us what he had, we went back there and played. You know, I heard somebody at a meeting one night talk about cracked chairs. That just gives you a scar to think about what you remember about rec park. We ain't worried about cracked chairs. We want to change lives. And that's how you change it. You give a kid a ball. I'm not just saying soccer ball, basketball, but any kind of ball. And I want to talk, not just basketball or soccer. I can give you names like Ramsey Curry. I can give you names like Ryan Altheiser, Brandon Buskle. I mean, I could go on and on. Myra Stevenson, that grew up on that tennis court down there. Nothing to do with basketball. They grew up on that tennis court. And I'm not the only person that that rec park changed lives. I loved going in there and seeing Tommy Sargent. Tommy's back with Richlands now, teaching, if I'm not mistaken, correct? Tommy Sargent run that rec park, took our money for 25 years, 20 years. Old Man Bill, hate was all get out, but I miss Bill. You know, I don't know if y'all know Skip with the goggles, but he used to walk around and getting in our way in basketball, but we loved Skip. You know, I could go on and on. Craig Hunsaker. You know, y'all don't know this story. I'm going to give you some more history. Lou Perry. I was on the bank watching my dad play ball when Lou Perry hit a softball that went to the swimming pool. Y'all might not know what softball is, but that's amazing feat. Lou Perry, God rest his soul, was the greatest coach in southwest Virginia. Tommy King, coaches at Tazewell right now. Watched him play 1,000 games at the Richlands Rec Park. I could go on and on with great names. But to get this multi-sports complex here is huge. It's huge. It can save a life. If it saves one, one is a chain reaction, and it'll change hundreds. Think about that. It's very important, this community. We don't need to move it. We need to rebuild it. Need to make it better. If that's turf field, softball fields, whatever, let's do this. Let's make it happen. The kids are the future, not us. The kids. Period. Thank you.
Thank you, Rocky. I want to apologize for my being late. That's what's running the meeting behind. I'll take full responsibility for that. Okay. Next, we have Kevin C. Hamilton. Mr. Hamilton, where are you, Kevin? You're up.
My name's Kevin Hamilton. I live at 414 Buchanan Street in Richlands here. I just, you know, I watched the last town council meeting y'all had on the budget of the $5.4 million that we have to spend, you know, at the council's will, I guess. But, you know, I just wanted to, you know, I went, I went over to the, after hearing the meeting and everything, I went over to the rec park the next day and looked around there, saw some, you know, issues that needs taken care of. One of the main concerns over there is, you know, they're wanting to put this soccer field over there, and, I mean, I'm not opposed to a soccer field. I think it's an awesome idea. It's a great idea. But every great idea isn't always the best idea, you know? You can put a million dollar field over there, but then you're still going to have the parking issue. There's nowhere to park. And you cram all these parents and all these kids into one area, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of inconvenient, and it's, it's a little unsafe, to be honest with you. And over at Critterville, I looked over there, and there's, there's several things. I looked in every single dugout, took pictures. I have pictures on my phone of it. Every single dugout is cracked. The mortar in the brick is cracked. Every single press box, it's cracked. The one in between the, you know, the two fields closest to the playground, it's cracked from the top all the way to the bottom. I mean, you know, I feel like, I feel like those are, those are issues that we should use some of that money to fix the things that are wrong, and then with whatever we have left, start, you know, start building off of that. I mean, you know, that's my, that's my main concern is, you know, because safety is one of the biggest things. The, the playground over there, it's looked horrible for years, years and years. And, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm kind of afraid to take my kids over there, because I don't know if something's going to break, or, you know, they're going to get tetanus or something like that. I mean, it's, it's pretty bad over there. I don't know if any of you all have taken a look at it, but I really feel like some of those funds need to go, you know, towards recreation, yes, but for the right thing. And, you know, I think we need to take a look at our neighboring towns, Lebanon and Tazewell. Tazewell's doing great, you know, new things opening up. I believe they have a walking trail opening up sometime here real soon, and Lebanon with the splash pad, no charge. My kids went there this summer, had a great time. I mean, it's, I loved it. I would love to see something like that come here and, you know, bring families together and bring the community together. And, you know, businesses around here, you know, they, they stay up and for a little while. You have a little cupcake shop open up. Yeah, their prices might be a little, little steep, but if people would just think, in the community, go spend your money at those places and help those local businesses out. And, you know, it's, it's honestly the community's fault that these businesses don't succeed. If you're not going to go spend money there, they're not going to be able to stay in business. So, I mean, that's, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to see some of those funds go to, go to things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I want to be clear that I did not set parameters openly from the beginning of this public hearing. So several of our speakers spoke with heart, all of them did, and exceeded the five minutes. And thank you, Brian, for alerting me. I just tried not to call anyone because that's something I didn't do. So with all due respect to our citizens, is there someone who did not sign up who would like to have five minutes? Mr. Earls, please come up.
Good evening. I'm Craig Earls at 311 Linwood Drive, and I currently serve on the Recreation Commission, although I'm not speaking as a Recreation Commission. I'm speaking as a citizen today. I want to first thank you for the opportunity for us to have this public hearing. This is very important for our town. This is a, this is a turning point. You don't get this kind of money very often. So this is very important, and I thank everyone who came. Lots of great ideas. And I first want to say that I've, I've been around kind of this project for a while, and when Jeff kind of brought the vision forward for it and to garner support for it, and the planning that's gone into it, I think that this multi-use facility is very important to the community, not only for, for the use of the field itself, but there's other improvements to that property, particularly around safety, that I feel like should be included in that. Parking is definitely one of those, and also lighting over to the rec park. It's very poor lighting and hazardous to drive over there in the evening. So I think that those are very important infrastructure items that should be included in there, along with a splash pad. And we've had some investment in other items over there, and maybe some other grant opportunities. So I'm looking forward to hearing possibly if some of those grant opportunities, matching grants, things like that can be brought forward to cut some of the costs down. Because the infrastructure piece is extremely important as well. The Pizza Hut work and the work that's down Iron Street, particularly that we've been trying to get fixed for a long time due to no funds, I think it's not fair to some of those citizens to not fix some of those items. So I think it is balancing, you know, what we have here, and, and all of these are competing priorities. And I know we've put you here to make these very difficult decisions, but in the, the best interest of, of the town, you know, having a big field like this, I've ran tournaments, I've taken my kids to tournaments all over the place, and spend, you know, a lot of funds in other county and in other areas. So this is an economic driver for us, being able to have a field like this for soccer, football, softball, and God's Rock Stars, whatever it is over there, it's important to the community. But it is a balancing act, and I think that grant funds can come in to help offset some of these. and I think that grant funds can come in to help offset some of these costs as well. And I will help wherever I can to, you know, to help to get these grants and, and any type of help that I might be able to help with over there. But again, I think safety issues and some of the infrastructure projects like Iron Street, Pizza Hut, all these things are very, very important. And thank you for the opportunity to speak. And, and on behalf of this project, I hope that you'll vote to proceed with it. It's very important to our citizens, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Last call. Is there anyone for this public hearing? Do you want one more round, Rocky? Can we limit it to three minutes?
How about one?
One, you've got it. Step up, please.
Rocky Hill, again, I spoke from my heart the first time, now the business side of it. God's Rock Stars is a special needs program. We have people from Hurley, we have people from Lebanon, St. Paul, Castlewood, Richlands. I could go on and on. This is, this is a growing organization for our special needs kids. It's an amazing opportunity. I've spoke with several people about the multi-sports complex. We are willing to partner up with the town because I'm trying to find a place to build a field. I already have materials, I already have some money allotted back. I will promise you, handshake deal right here. God's Rock Stars will partner with anybody to make this happen so we can build the road down to where we can have access for the handicap. We can update the parking lots because me with my God's Rock Stars, we can get a few more grants than the town can get and other people can get because we got a handicap update. So I will partner with you guys, whoever is on this, and we will do this, okay? I just wanted to tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rocky. Okay. So in fairness to everyone, is anyone else who wants to speak before this public hearing is closed? Amy Lane? Would you mind to state your name and address, please, for the record?
I'm Amy Lane, and I live in Belfast, but I've spent my whole life, for the most part, here in Richlands, on Tank Hill, and I'm a graduate from Richlands High School. And as an adult, I do a lot of volunteer work here in Richlands. And a lot of my volunteer work is with the Friends of the Tazewell County Public Library. My heart is with the Richlands Library. Our Richlands Library is falling apart. We've had some money and some grant money and some money met to give the facelift the structural damage that needs to be repaired, but it has not yet been done. I'm hoping that with this new money that's coming in, that maybe we can finally see it started. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Morgan Erp, 1618 Sixth Street. So first of all, I was going to say, yeah, should give money to the Richlands Library. I think that's top of the list, my books. Second idea? A laser tag arena. I think that would be amazing in the town. Just saying, everybody can participate, something different. And I mean, somebody as big as myself can participate because once I'm in an arena like that, you don't see me anymore, but that's something to consider. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. I'll just continue, not discontinue, just continue. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? It's important that we have your input. There being no other persons wanting to speak, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Instead of a roll call vote, I would just ask for all in favor of closing the public hearing. Please say aye clearly.
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk, it's a unanimous vote.